At this time, I'll call the special meeting to order. This evening, we are doing another one of our workshops on overlay district. I would also like to let you know that Commissioner Marley will be here, but he will be arriving late. He was called to Raleigh today and he did tell me he would make it, but he wasn't sure he could be here by six. So we'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
All right. This is work session three of the district's vision, growth, engagement, facilitation. We, yes, we form the cities, but then the cities form us. Every time we build anything, we affect the quality of life of people. First, how do we get here? Um, we started with work session one in terms of recent activities and what we talked about in work session one was, uh, we talked about what a moratorium is, um, when is it utilized, um, when is it effective, what are the best practices? Um, when should you do it, when shouldn't you do it, when, what legislative or general statute regulations apply? Uh, we talked about why here, uh, which led to the adoption of the moratorium because we had negative trends we were seeing with motor vehicle repair and vape shops and things of that nature. And so we talked about the adoption of a moratorium, which, uh, is still in place until December thirty first of this year. And so what you're doing tonight is, um, proving me to move forward with submitting this legislation to resolve these issues to the county planning board. Um, we talked about negative trends, like I said, with the uses they were identified in the moratorium. We talked about advantages of doing a moratorium in an overlay district. And we talked about frequently asked questions about people wondering, um, if I have an existing building, how does this affect my business? Um, moratoriums, um, only apply to the uses identified, so if you didn't have one of those businesses, it didn't affect you at all. If you had a business that was open, it didn't affect you at all. It really affected new applications for consideration. And that's only but during the moratorium period. Um, we moved to work session two where, um, Mr. Lloyd presented the due diligence in terms of the data collection. He did a massive, what they call dashboard assessment, where you pretty much ride in the entire town identifying every one of the businesses that fit within that moratorium or that identified negative trend. So we'll know, well, how many of these vape shops do we have? How many of these tire shops do we have? How many of these oil loo places do we have? Uh, we talked about surpluses in terms of the amount of revenue we have coming in based on uses. We talked about the leakages. Also, there was some questions asked about those numbers I am gonna get, uh, in the process of EC Commerce updating those numbers to make sure, um, that, you know, they haven't been skewed with the market. Uh, we talked about the focus areas, Main Street, Rockfish Road, Legion Road, things of that nature. Um, they're talking about the collective data and then we had surveys. And so, as it relates to the legislative amendments, what I'm holding up for you right now is tabs. So if you click on, if you, if you flip over to each one of these tabs, this is the two main sections of the ordinance where those changes are being made, but I have tracked changes underlining the new legislation. So there's only five pieces in here, but I tabbed them so that you can go along with this slide and you can see the section of the code that's being changed. That's the main piece here. And this is ultimately the document that'll be submitted to the county for the, um, the, the changes. So the first change we, we have comes out of Article Two Interpretations, Calculations, and Definitions. Because ultimately what our consultant wanted to do is, there's some ambiguity here and so we wanted to attack it through the definitions section to identify exactly what we're talking about. An ancillary sale is where a grocery store, supermarket, convenience store, or similar market use. And it ba- it puts parameters in there. The main one that basically talked about is it's putting a, uh, threshold in gross area or, uh, square feet. Um, it talks about how to make that, um, I guess distinction between a grocery store and an ancillary sale. So if you're talking about any grocery store, convenience store, retail kiosk, or similar use that has two hundred and fifty square feet or less, that shall mean where there's no more than thirteen square feet that can be used for display, sale, and delivery. So we're putting specific definitions in place to identify this stuff. You'll see how that rolls into the regulations that actually prohibit or, uh, determine or control where they can go. Um, tobacco, we never had an actual definition of that in our code. Uh, tobacco is considered any preparation of nicotine-rich leaves of tobacco plants, which are cured by a process of drying and fermenting for the use to smoke and chew and absorb and dissolving, uh, things of that nature. Most of these words are catch on. But what is tobacco paraphernalia? If you're talking about vape shops, it's a lot of stuff they sell. Now, I don't really go in that often, but it's like the whole world in there. So you don't wanna miss, um, something. So paraphernalia is considered equipment, devices, uh, instruments that are primarily designed for manufacturing or smoking. So I think that's those e-cigarettes. Um, you're talking about, um, chewing, um, absorbing, uh, dissolving, inhaling, snorting, sniffing, or ingesting by any other means to the body of tobacco products. Um, items or devices classified as tobacco paraphernalia included, but not limited to pipes, puncture metal bowls, water bombs, electric pipes, e-cigarettes. So say you got a vape shop that only sells some of these things. That definition is all encompassing and now we have it identified in our code. Um, same section, um, tobacco store and smoke shop. What is that defined as? We didn't have a use defined before. Um, that is any premise that is dedicated to the display, sale, distribution, delivery, offering, furnishing, or marketing of tobacco products or tobacco paraphernalia, provided however that any grocery store, supermarket, convenience store, or similar retail use that only sells convenient, conventional cigar, cigar, cigarettes, tobacco as an ancillary sale, let's go back to that definition. That's the distinction between a grocery store that sells cigarettes and a tobacco shop. So we're creating that distinction in the code with the definitions first.
Right, and you add, I'd like to add, um, and I've worked with these vape shop people before. The reason we separate that out is what they'll do is basically they'll be a, a vape shop, but they'll throw in enough groceries, so there's chips and whatnot, and then try and call themselves a convenience store. So that they won't fall into that separation that you're gonna see.
Good.
So they are.
Being combined.
A specific use.
Alright.
And so what you'll see is the definitions are gonna connect with the interpretations, which connect directly to the distance requirements and specific development controls we're putting in. Because that ancillary definition I just read previous is the language in here that distinguishes between a regular gas station or grocery store and a specifically designated tobacco shop. Now we go to Article Ten, which is the individual uses. This is where we're gonna list the individual uses identified in the moratorium and the development controls we're putting in place to address them. So if we're talking about development standards for individual uses, that's the section of the code that you're in. I think that is the fourth tab, I think. Yes, where it says, uh, wait a minute.
Motor vehicle.
No, that's the last tab, where it says metal buildings prohibited.
Yeah, my see it's on, uh, the.
Second to the last page.
Right, second to the last page.
And so what you're doing now is you're gonna see the, the actual controls we're putting in place. So we're talking about a motor vehicle parts and, and supply sales. The minimum required lot size is now a half acre minimum when located and this is the areas they apply to. Hope Mills Road, North Main Street, South Main Street, Rockfish Road, Camden, Legion, Elk, Black Bridge Road, and George Owen. Or unless it's located at an activity node and this identifying the Southwest Plan, this language is triggering the Southwest Plan. But what it says is when you say one half acre minimum, that part store can't go right across from the, the post office anymore. Cause those are smaller lots.
Right.
It's forcing them to the areas that you have bigger lots, which ironically are in the nodes and the, the major intersections. So what that indirectly does is it doesn't eliminate motor vehicle parts and supply stores from our code. It just says that you can't saturate them on these small little mom and pop, um, locations. So that's the indirect way we were, that the consultant came up with to attack this, but do it in a way that is tied to development controls. The next one is motor vehicle rentals. We had an application recently. I talked to a guy and they were drawing it. But now you have to be on at least a one acre lot for a used car lot or car sale. The one that we were talking about is about a point six acres. It used to be the Grateful Head. That's not eligible. Those lots of that size are not eligible for those uses anymore.
Yeah.
And so it's a one acre and, but the same, look at the roads it applies to. So we basically listed all the major roadways through Hope Mills. You can now no longer have a motor vehicle rental facility on Hope Mills Road, North Main Street, South Main Street, Rockfish, Camden, Legion, Elk, Black Bridge, or George Owens, if it's below an acre in size. That indirectly, you know, so that's the way that, uh, Mr. Lloyd came up with how to deal with the saturation. Um, and each different use identified in the moratorium has one of these development controls we're going through. You're talking about motor vehicle repair. Now we'll get into, go ahead, um, question me.
You said we can't have those, uh, rental shops again on Hope Mill or certain roads?
You can have them, but the, the minimum threshold now is you can't have it on a lot unless it's at least an acre in size.
Well, how about if they're already there?
Now, if they're already there, it doesn't apply a grandfather then. And so everything, that's a good question, Commissioner Lake. So let's say you have an existing motor vehicle rental place that is a lot of them in that's below an acre. If they go out of business and they lose their grandfather clause, they can't come back to that location.
So it's just for the pre-existing business owners now that's grandfathered in?
All the pre-existing owners that are here and that applies to anything, any change you make in any ordinance. If you're existing at the time that change is made, you're legally non-conforming. That's what a grandfather clause is technically titled as. Now, the mo- motor vehicle repair, later in the presentation, there's something that happened with an attorney that we found a solution to that as well. Um, motor vehicle repairs, the lot size is one half acre, um, same roadways, Hope Mills Road, North Main Street. You'll see that, um, um, echo throughout because those are the major roadways you see mostly, all the commercial development anyway. Um, and so, but now a motor vehicle repair is a half acre. I'll give you a prime example. We got, uh, and they'll get to this later a little bit more. We got approached by an attorney, um, that is, is, had some concerns about that out parcel where, uh, at Neighborhood Walmart where Waffle House is. Um, when this moratorium sunsets, his lot is point nine acres. It doesn't prohibit it. And so he was concerned that it was gonna negatively affect him because he had a deal in place before we adopted the moratorium, but he hadn't submitted anything. So he can't submit anything right now.
Right.
But when it opens up and sunsets, there are development controls that state that if that lot is at least point five acres, he's fine. If it's not.
For the repair?
For the repair.
Do we, I mean, and see, and that's my concern. I mean, it's a double edged sword because either they try to squeeze, if it is a full out repair facility and they try to squeeze every ounce of vehicles into that half acre, or even if we make it larger, you know.
I would say.
It doesn't have to be.
You guys can tweak that.
It's a minimum of one acre.
Yeah.
Be as large as they want.
Well, that's what I'm saying is maybe we should make the minimum larger to limit anyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we, the repair, yeah, repair typically, you're gonna have lots of vehicles waiting in line. If you just go down Legion Road and look at, I would hate to say the man's name because, but you go to, there's one down there right now and his whole front is full of cars and then.
Now, I'll tell you what Mr. Lloyd said too. These numbers are meant for you guys to do exactly what you're saying, like, wait a minute, half acre might be too small. I'll give you a prime example. And it's gonna become very apparent to you when I break down what we just added to this definition. Um, because a lot of these places are not that big. They're oil loo places. They're not, they're very small.
Alright.
So if you think that that is one of the uses you want, that you feel is saturated, maybe we change that to an acre. This is the time to say, hey, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Lloyd, we kinda wanna tweak this. Now, I think Mr. Lloyd looked at what the industry standard was. And I think that his methodology was that a half acre was enough to kinda saturate some of these out. But you do have some smaller operations that can operate in that half acre size. So if you think it should be three quarters of an acre or a whole acre, this is the time that we have that conversation. Um, next is motor vehicle sales, new and used. Um, minimum lot size is an acre, same roads. Um, tobacco in store and smoke shops. Now let's go back to that definition. So in the definitions, we gave you guys a very clear definition of what a tobacco shop is. Now, we're not doing a lot size threshold. You can't have one within another mile radius of it.
I like that.
Done.
And how, do you need language in there that says, because just like you said, that a tobacco store could get around this by putting in a certain amount of groceries?
Well, I think if you go back to ancillary sales, that's why that definition is.
But I mean, somebody's gonna have to check that, right?
I'll give you a prime example. Restaurant, bar. If the larger percentage of your sales is derived from alcohol, but you still serve food, you're a bar. If the larger percentage of your sales are tied to food and you still sell alcohol, you're a restaurant. That's the distinction that's in place that says, are you a grocery store, are you a service station, or are you a tobacco shop? So we have a tobacco shop defined, but we have ancillary sales that talks about what they're selling. So somebody can't put some freezers with some bread and some eggs and say, hey, I'm a convenience store. No, you're a tobacco shop based on this definition. But that threshold in development control is one mile radius. I do think we can talk to the county with GIS to put some layers in place to do that. This is what we do at group homes. There is a layer in our ordinance titled group homes and the only regulation we have is you can't have one within fifty feet of another. Click on that layer, it pulls up every one of them with these radiuses and that allows me to dictate if it's in violation of that ordinance.
Yes, I love, I, I like the direction this is going, but at the same time, I love the, uh, the distant radius in some of these areas. We probably maybe look at distant radius on some of these other entities as well.
Uh, to, to me, whatever you feel strengthens this even more. Um, I think that's just wide open. Now, go ahead.
I mean, and I'll, I'll do that. That's why I have the workshop. But I also looked at the lot size along these roads.
Okay.
There's two reasons for this language. There's not that many lots, zone commercial, along these major roads that are gonna, first of all, qualify.
Okay.
Now, the only reason I made motor vehicle repair a little bit smaller was because of the mom and pop repair that I heard discussion about and, you know, not wanting to put them out.
Right.
But also I tied this into activity nodes, which is what leads to the Southwest Plan. This says, see, the South Pleasant, West Plan, um, designates activity nodes, but it never says how big they are. And that's where you come in and say to the county, listen, when we update this plan, we need a set size, whether it be a thousand foot radius, fifteen hundred foot radius, whatever. So, these restrictions don't exist if they're at an activity node, which is why it's. Right, that's what we want them. But, but this workshop, I did want you to look at this minimum lot sizes. And of, of course, if you weren't happy with them, then I would change them. But along these roads, zone commercial now, you won't find many, many lots, an acre.
But that would be what we're trying to stop, so that the mom and pops are already out there.
Right.
So we're not hurting them. They're grandfathered in. If they go out of business, then it's gonna change.
To an acre if that's the way you all feel.
Well, but the reason why I say that is because what we have available are all small. And if they're small, what's gonna go there is gonna be, if you say it's allowed, that's what'll be there. And so we're, we're actually in, uh, gonna allow it on Main Street because of those little lots we have. I think my concern was the fact that, just like what happened down at Ten City. You know, you got a whole lot. That's what I'm saying. Each one of those are individual lots and what has ended up with is each one of those lots, look at all that's there. So if you put a little, any kind of, um, auto repair, if they're good, they're gonna have lots of cars waiting in line.
You know, we, we, one of the things I do is I follow development trends. So let's say we made it an acre. And then we start noticing after a couple of years, it's negatively impacted on the business. We can always.
Go back and change.
Get back.
Yeah.
Uh, but what Mr. Lloyd is saying is, this is the perfect time to say, hey, Chancellor, Mr. Lloyd, up that up a little bit or this one's okay, make this a little bit smaller. But this is the time, the easiest explaining the methodology.
Right.
And the mechanism they use.
And, and the reason why these roads are specifically used also is when you come through with your overlay districts, they'll be on these roads. And that's where you can put standards like buffering on three sides and, and things like that.
This is setting up that framework. Now, if we go to something else, let's go back to motor vehicle repair. Um, and Scott, this is, um, I even, Dan and I, I don't know if you guys are contacted, but then attorney for the piece that's at Neighborhood Walmart that he tried to say that the moratorium wasn't, um, valid because an oil loo place with babbling is considered motor vehicle service. We don't have a definition of that in our code. Now, we know as planners, motor vehicle service stations in our interpretation are gas stations. It doesn't say that. When we say motor vehicle and or repair, we're talking about the oil loo places.
Right.
But he's trying to attack that interpretation. So what we're doing on the matrix code is adding the word maintenance. Right now, it just says motor vehicle repair and or bodywork. He's trying to say bodywork isn't considered oil changes. Maintenance is.
That's maintenance, right.
So we're trying to dummy proof this to see where we can just tweak this just enough to, to stop anything from slipping through the cracks. That's a perfect example of what you guys just said, that you have concerns on if and half an acre is adequate enough. If you think it's gonna be a couple, now what Tom did, the dashboard assessment, so he has the data, but one of them, I get a stomach ache if I know we passed this ordinance and the next day I get a used tire shop on a half acre lot that someone found.
Right.
Or subdivided. And we, so you can do that as well. So I get it. But this is a perfect example of the ordinance being, or moratorium being attacked because of some ambiguity. But if you notice when we started this whole thing, the definitions, cause imagine if we put those development controls of tobacco shops, one mile radius, or motor vehicle with a half acre lot, but we didn't define what a tobacco shop was. We didn't define what ancillary uses was, to set the threshold. You got the development controls in place, but you got cracks in it that make it a little easier to be manipulated.
Yes.
And so that's why I said when we talked about this section here, motor vehicle repair, I was talking about something that I was referring to here, where we went to that motor vehicle repair definition on the matrix table and we're adding the word maintenance. Now you have a copy of that in front of you as well. That's what this is. So this is a copy of the use table and you'll see in red where we pretty much just highlight. This'll be a part of the package that we submit as well. Um, and that's basically it. Um, where we are now, um, it goes to planning board, uh, next and it comes back to us for full adoption. Um, but before we send it to the planning board, if you want that, um.
One acre, yeah.
Or any of them. Any, look at all of them. Um, um, all five of these, motor vehicle parts and supplies, um, rental, repair.
Well, okay, let me ask this. Now, motor vehicle parts and supplies, would a pick and pull fall into that category? Or would that be considered a junk?
That's a junk.
Okay. Okay.
That's junk, right?
Yeah, cause I'm like, oh, that's parts, pick and pull, no.
And, and you have a lot of the, um, and this is where Ten City comes in. Because some of these older, um, repair places, when you see the forty cars out there and you, you look at the site and, and, uh, is grass growing in this one? This one doesn't have tires. Uh, this one, the tag's expired two years ago. That's a junkyard.
Right.
So we attack it through the code. The code has a very distinct definition of what a junkyard is. It had, a, a junk car.
Junk car.
Um, and it gets tight, kinda dicey too.
Yes, it does.
Maybe, uh, approaching me about doing code enforcement on a car that's considered a junk car. The definition in our code, if it does not have four flat tires.
That's right.
And an expired tag.
That's right. It's not a junk.
So let's say it has an expired tag and a flat tire. If they go out there and pump that tire up.
It's not junk.
Um, they can put a tarp over it, put it in the backyard.
Yep.
But you can't do that but with one car. So there's little languages and you hear me constantly going back to systems of checks and balances. That's what the code is doing, but we're, we're also meant to look at it and analyze to see if there's cracks in it where it can be manipulated. And that's with any code. So like I said, when we're talking about going for a motor vehicle repair up to an acre, if after a year or two, we start finding out, hey, these are negatively impacting sidewalks is a prime example. Um, about three years went by, I started noticing, we approved about five small mom and pop operations. But at the time, any of the, all of those required sidewalks to be put out front, where they were killing the projects because these people are just going inside existing buildings and just opening up. They were not doing any construction. So we didn't eliminate the sidewalk requirement. We just said that there should be a threshold in place. If it's more than fifty percent renovation or if it's new construction, that was a direct response to a negative building tree. So I don't think you should go softer on the half acre.
Oh, no.
Go harder with an acre and then we pull it back if over time it's too much of a control. We can do that. I hate to have it at an acre and something slips through the cracks. You know, we're, we're defeating the whole purpose of why we did. But, uh, any question that you may have? Ultimately, if you guys want, I would say, don't give me an answer right now. Um, look this over. If you guys want some, uh, changes to it in terms of, I think it seems like it's the sizes of the lots that you guys are focused on, but don't just look at motor vehicle repair. Talked us about the other five, uh, the other four areas. If you think they're okay, they're fine. All I need pretty much, and I don't know, um, if you need to, you have to give me authorization in this public hearing, or if you can just email me to say, hey, I think we're okay with this particular language. I just need authorization to send it to planning board. It requires a planning board approval and it comes back to us for full adoption anyway. Um, but before I send it to the planning board, I wanna make sure that you guys at least can tweak it, um, as much as you want.
Madam, ma'am.
Yes.
Based on what you just said, uh, Chancellor, increasing the lot size as opposed to reducing, uh, is something that we should strongly consider. And, uh, if that's a consensus, I think that we can kinda make that decision almost now.
Yeah.
You know.
That's something you got.
I agree.
OB F.
Yes.
We don't need surprises.
Right.
Taking the planning, then this is probably the last time.
This is the last time you're gonna see it, yeah.
Before it goes to the planning board, so you try and get consensus now. So once it goes to the planning board, when it comes back to you, you're all on the same page.
Right.
I, I mean, I personally don't, uh, have any reservations if you guys want it to an acre. Because, I mean, you think about it, the main reason why we're doing this is to stop the saturation.
Yes.
If we're presenting something, so you're not saying you don't agree with the methodology or the approach, tweak the size.
Right.
Do we, we need to.
So we in.
Madam, ma'am.
Do we have a consensus on that? Yes, sir?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't wanna put a roadblock in a mom and pop place that has seven tenths of an acre. He doesn't have an acre. Does that mean he can't build on there now if it's changed?
If, if he's open now and you guys move to an acre, he would not be affected at all. The only way he'd be affected is if two things have to happen simultaneously. He has to go out of business, I don't know if it's simultaneous, but, uh, uh, either or, he has to go out of business for one calendar year consecutive, or his building must be destroyed more than fifty percent of value. That's how you lose your legally non-conforming status. So just with the adoption of this, he's perfectly fine. Um, it's only if one of those two things happen, then he can still build, well, he can't build it there. But you, it doesn't eliminate it, it just puts thresholds in place that dictate, cause if you lose your grandfather clause, you have to build back on that side in compliance with the regulations. So that use just wouldn't be eligible on that lot unless he got some adjacent property consolidated and invaded an acre. Um, I wouldn't, um, encourage that practice, but just adopting that one acre threshold does not put him out of business at all.
You know, the, the mayor, I think, mentioned something earlier that at this date and time, there are no threat, there's no threat to the mom and pops because most of them has, most moms and pops are gone already.
Well, I'm telling you, the, the threat to the mom and pops is the saturation.
Yes, I know.
And I, I speak to this, uh, oil loo place, um, right over by Papa John's. I know that guy. And I take my truck to him specifically every time I need my truck repaired. And I take my truck to him specifically every time I need my truck repaired because we got a great relationship. Nature, but it's a small time business. You know, I could go to to the bigger stores, I could. I wanna go to this guy.
So really protecting them.
You're protecting them because imagine if you put a a a eight bay shop right across the street from them. That's how he's negatively affected.
Now, follow up question with as far as motor vehicle repair, maintenance, whatever, does car washes fit into that?
Car wash has its own definition of car wash.
And is there anywhere in this language that says they have to be a certain distance apart? Because that's what you did that with the tobacco.
The tobacco, I think the tobacco was more, um, I won't say egregious, but. I think based on what Tom looked at in terms of the lot sizes along those roads. I think he felt that the lot size would accomplish the same thing in terms of saturation because. I don't think you're gonna have that many one acre size commercial lots within that certain quarter on that particular um. Road, all those roadways, but this is the time to have that discussion.
Well, I've already, there's already a new one out close to fifty nine. That probably should be in Hope Mills, but it's not. It's, it should have, it's.
Which one is?
It's almost to how, almost to the fifty nine bridge. There's a new, there's, I guess new is. It's it's opened up more cars. And then as soon as you go not even, you know, half mile, there's another one. And on the other side of the road, there's another one. So, but now they are outside of our, they're, but they're in our M I A. And so what I'm seeing happening is just like along Main Street, you know, um, there, look how many we have between. Um, Cameron Road and up to um George Owen already. And then when you hit George Owen, you got a couple more, plus one that's supposed to be there beside um. Where Biscuitville is, it hasn't opened yet. Remember, it was a zoned and approved for car lot there. It's vacant right now. Remember the one that we had the situation with, they needed, they wanted to make it full lot.
I think you guys denied that, but they tried.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying is I think we've still got to be along that roadway that's not in Hope Mills, but it's in the M I A. For whatever reason, they're getting open without getting a, you know, coming before us. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna, again, because I came up with the M I, the M I A is just development standards. It has nothing to do with zoning. It's completely due with subdivision subdivision codes, buffering and whatnot. An acre is a lot of land. And I think you'll find along these streets that it's gonna be tough to get an acre. And and it's gonna be expensive. So these little used car dealers. Uh, you know, you're you're talking about commercial land along one of these streets. You know, an acre's fifty thousand easy or more. A lot more. And 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 you're gonna get a report. I'm gonna submit a report to you all. Is, you're not gonna just get this and get this through. The report's gonna tie in this. The whole concept with activity nodes and these streets and the need for the plan. To one designate specifically the size of these activity nodes and two. That these streets need to have um overlay districts on them. And then you can come back and do even more um development standards and buffering and and access and that sort of thing. Of course, we can't do it at this point.
It's not impossible, cause if y'all think back several years back when you had the pharmacy explosion. You will have a C V S over here, Walgreen over here, and another one across the street. You remember? I mean, that was an explosion, but then as soon as they, some of them opened up, they closed. And you had a lot of vacant buildings and that, you know, and that, now that probability do exist with the large developer to have deep pockets.
I I think what Tom is saying too, um, do you travel along these roads on commercial zone property and find. Multiple one acre commercial properties that a vehicle repair can go on. That indirectly is creating a distance indirectly. I think what the mayor and and Charles is amazing when you say vape shops, not one within another mile of another one. And so I think the methodology is looking at how many lots are eligible. In a commercial district at that size that someone wants to put a oil loop place on. Most of the acres or more at that size are gonna be something like Chick-fil-A or something that's a bigger magnitude. But I totally understand the concern. Um, and again, it doesn't sound like you guys have an issue with how is the actual tweaking of the amount. That we're talking about. I do think it sounds like you're gonna go an acre with um. For motor vehicle repair, but I understand what the mayor's saying about possibly a distance threshold on some of these. I do personally think that um the way we have it set up with the size acres, uh acre size on four of them and distance on the other. Um, does address the issue, but I do think if you tweak some of those half acres to an acre, I think that does accomplish the issue. But it's 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 your call.
Okay, thank you.
It's best if we have the feedback now.
Yeah, well, we do need to get some.
If it's going to go to the planning board, we wouldn't be able to say, this is, you know, the town board recommends this. The planning board really isn't gonna make any judgment on this the way it's set up now. That they're gonna say, okay, this is what the town wants.
That that is correct. We probably won't get any pushback.
Okay, do we want to just, do we need to make a motion or just make it by consensus? If on the motor vehicle repair, uh go to one acre rather than half acre, uh Commissioner Molly, your thoughts? You're good?
I don't have a problem with supporting that, but I hate to do it on the yank of a chain. You know, I'd like to have some time to, for us to think about it.
I will say uh back to what Mister Lloyd is saying, um, we do have a clock that's ticking on this moratorium.
And remember, you said we can go back and change it if it becomes a problem too.
So the, I think consensus would be that we would change the half acre to one acre on that motor vehicle repair. And I think, is there anything else that anyone sees that you can't live with? Everybody okay with the others?
I have a question though. So, when you get people, you know, approaching you to see about doing such a thing and you explain them. That we have a change to one acre, um, do you keep any kind of like tracking, like, hey, I've had. Five different businesses. You do? Okay, so that way we can determine if.
We asked for the threshold with the sidewalks. Same thing happened with the cross lateral access. After one, that's just something isolated. If I get three or four within a certain distance of time, that's a development. And so it's not meant to just come in and change it immediately, but it's incumbent upon me to let you guys know, hey, I'm noticing some things. That I think we might need to have a work session to address. We talk through it. If we talk through it and we still feel comfortable the way it is, we do that. But if we present and we find some things we can do to to tweak it to address those issues, that's when we make the change.
Any other questions? Everybody good? Like, is that it?
I do wanna just reiterate that I know there's been concerns about that Southwest Plan. And I think my final report is gonna tie in this activity note, the need for overlay districts. And it's gonna tie into what the Southwest Plan needs to be updated, needs to need to be addressed. So that'll help your case with with that.
Alrighty then, we'll uh call this meeting. Close this meeting and we'll be starting our regular meeting in.
Seventeen minutes.
Seventeen minutes.